The team met again this week. We're in, I think, great shape to submit the grant application. Once the period opens, they haven't released the paperwork for the grant yet. We've got tons of letters of support. We've got some very good detail. We've got some good renderings and incredibly, I asked Randy when he thought the engineer might be out to do the survey. We needed a basic survey. I had money in my purchase of services to be able to pay for it. And he said he would follow up while they showed up today and did the survey. So, and that's gonna, that's gonna get us, uh, that's gonna get us extra points in the grant application for having, having had that done. And I don't see the survey as wasted money because I do believe at some point, this work is going to be done. The town's gonna want it. Whether we can, if we get the grants terrific, if we don't, I really don't, I mean, the survey is not going to go bad. So it's gonna, I, I think it's gonna serve us well. I actually think we have a great shot at it. And just so you know, Rebecca had to, highlight or has to highlight a price range that we think the project will come in at. So the, the, I thought the applicable range was between 500 and 750,000. So I've been thinking five to six and everything's going up every day. So, I, but I, I think we're, we're in very, very good shape. So I'm, I'm excited about that. My capital plan review, again, tonight was, is meant to be higher level overview. But just to do a check in for an update, if we look at total amount of money that I'm recommending, that I'll be recommending that is spent on buildings, town, uh, town buildings and the request from, well, the town buildings would be 300 and sorry, there would be one second please. Town buildings would be $354,000. Additionally, three projects that the, the school district requested 185,991 dollars, which totals 539,991 dollars. Plus afford 350 for the DPW of 115,000 dollars. Totalling what the current ARPA request would be is 654,991 dollars. And currently we have for ARPA funds in excess of 1,369,000 dollars. And that's a flexible number. We're still reprogramming some money. But that's very close to what the accurate number is. Beyond that, I'll be recommending 248,000 dollars in chapter 90 money for, for the dumps, dump sander and the spreader dump body for the DPW. And as I've said previously, 345,000 dollars of the stabilization fund for the new roof at the fire station. So that I've sent you an email with the first, first real look at it. I, I'm, I'm well positioned to do the five year plan based on establishing this. So I'm think, so I actually, by default, gave you an ARPA update at the same time because I told you where we are. And it would look like, it, it, it looks like again, round numbers. If you want a round number, I would say if you approve at a future meeting, the ARPA spending for those projects, we would have around 700,000 dollars left in ARPA funds.
That's nice.
It, it is. It'll go fast, but it's nice. I don't know where we would be without the ARPA funds. We'd be in deep trouble.
Right.
So I'm very, very appreciative to the federal government for that. And I'll have, uh, for the first meeting in March, March 2nd, I will have the ARPA numbers updated with where I think we actually are. And also I will have the, the five year plan for you. And I'll, and on March 7th, I'm presenting to the advisory committee. Also at our March 2nd meeting, not necessarily germane under this, but just so you know, you will be seeing the first draft of the warrant or pretty much tightened up warrant. And then we'll have some things beyond that. Last, but not least, I would like to add, it's not on my town administrator's report, but I just found out today when I picked up the Bolton Independent and read that our library director, Kelly Collins, recently celebrated 25 years as the town's library director. I was not aware of that. But I would like to congratulate Kelly for 25 years of service. That's quite an accomplishment for someone. And I, I just thought it, it needed to be recognized at a select board meeting.
Well, that's great. Just going back to your capital plan stuff, just so the audience knows, I believe we're not using any free cash for any of those, those purchases right now.
Yes, I'm, I'm glad you said that. This would all be an appropriation of ARPA funds or chapter 90. With, so with the exception, with the exception of the stabilization fund, those funds that, that action can be approved by the select board.
Right.
And won't be articles at town meeting. Yes. So I, I didn't want to touch free cash. I thought it was important to leave free cash intact for whatever advisory feels we need to do with, with, with the budget.
Right. No, that's, that's great. That's good. It gives a little bit more flexibility. So that, that's great. Any questions?
No, no, sounds good.
Okay. I guess a few extra minutes. You wanna kind of delve into select board business?
It's fine with me.
Okay. Well, any public service announcements?
No.
Okay.
Can I enter for a quick second? I have reached out to Mr. Keen to let him know we're running early and he has entered the meeting. If you wanted to go back to the seven o'clock item. Oops.
Danny, you muted yourself.
Oh, okay. Well, I, I, you, Jenny did that, not me. If, if Mr., if Mr. Keen is here, let's, let's get that done. So we can let him go. So next up, we'll defer select board business. So next up is the event approval. The request from the Bolton Lions Club to hold the voluntary toll booth on Saturday, May 6, 2023, with a rain date of Saturday, May 13, 2023, from 8:30 in the morning to 12:30 in the afternoon near the Bolton Public Library. Andrew, you with us?
Yes. Hello. Thank you. This is, um, this is a, an event that the Bolton Mines Club has held many years. We had a couple off during the pandemic, but we did bring it back last year. And we do this, as you stated, for four hours. Looking at Saturday, May 6, if not May 13th for a rain date. We'll have a police detail present the entire time we're there. And we, we basically play in the highway, just like our mothers told us to. We set, we set up, set up cones in the middle of the road and signs, you know, making our presence is very visible. Again, the police detail is there as well. And we just, you know, it's voluntary toll booths.
Great. No, well, that, that's great. And I guess you guys have done this for many, many years. I'm sure that the chief is all fine with this stuff. So I have no questions. Bob, do you?
No, sounds good.
Okay, I'll take a motion to approve.
I move to approve the Lions Club voluntary toll booth on Saturday, May 6, with a rain date of Saturday, May 13.
I will second that. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Roll call Sakansky.
Aye.
Way Saki.
Aye.
Thank you.
Andrew, good luck.
Thank you very much. 15 minutes earlier, I was gonna be somewhere a little quieter, but okay, thank you very much. Have a good night.
All right, Don, do we have, do we, do we need Nikki or can we just do the, the release?
Uh, you, you are free to just vote to release.
Nikki is here.
Okay. Well, there you go. All right. So next up is the request from the Bolton Access Television for a release of 25,696.91 cents from the PEG cable account for quarter four operating expenses. Anything you want to highlight, Nikki or? Great, great. Sounds, sounds good. Sounds, sounds great. So unless there's any questions, I'll take a motion to approve the release of the funds.
I move to approve the release of 25,696.91 cents from the cable account to the Bolton Access TV.
I will second that. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Roll call Sakansky.
Aye.
Way Saki.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Nikki.
Thanks, Nikki.
Don't spend it in one place. Don, is Randy with us yet or do we?
Yeah, he's here. I see him.
All right. Well then, let's just zoom right to the next one. An update and discussion on the transfer station conversion to pay as you throw bag program and fee structure. Randy?
Hey, good evening, everybody.
Hey, Randy.
Thanks for inviting me tonight. The pay as you bag through, pay as you throw bag program started on February the first. I do want to preface it by making a correction from early representation I had. There was a misunderstanding between myself and the maker of the bags. I, I believe I told the board that the company would be the host, the warehouseer for the bags and that we would order them as needed. That was all my understanding. And I misunderstood. That was only if we went to a retail situation, like if we were selling it at a local store, they would, the local store would contact them and they would deliver the bags, not the town. So we received our full order. We were able to accommodate it in storage. The staff down the transfer station has arranged it the, the way they feel will work best for them. And it worked, looked pretty good. I was there yesterday. So we began selling the bags on February 1st and I asked the staff at the transfer station if they've had any, any feedback at all, positive or negative. And there has been none. Checked the compactor yesterday and there were a few colored bags in the, in receptacle for the compactor. We put out a notice, as you know, on, on the, through the website, through the news about the arrival of the bags, which prompted some, a lot of questions with regard to the seniors program, seniors bags. And initially my thought was to try and use up what we had for inventory for stickers to, to just use them up because we've had already purchased them. But I think for consistency sake and ease of, of this, the staff observing what's being thrown into the compactor that we've, we've converted everything over to selling of the bags.
That's great.
So at the request, I, I provided a summary of commodities from January, from July through the end of January. And I have the basic tonnages for all the materials that we collect. For instance, in municipal solid waste, which is what goes into the compactor essentially, and also the overflow. 438 tons of material was collected through the end of July. All of the tonnages are listed there. I estimated on a 12 month basis, pro-rated it out, extended it out. So an estimated tonnage for seven months is 750 tons. On municipal solid waste or 1.5 million pounds. The cost to, to deal with all of the solid waste and the bags are rated, the big bags are rated at 35 pounds a bag comes out to about 42,860 bags. Our current cost of the bag is 250. So selling it 46,000, 42,000 bags at 250, it's 107,000 dollars in revenue. You see, our total revenue, our total cost of 172,000. So there's, there's a shortfall there of about 65,000 dollars. Hopefully you can follow along and you'll see that.
Yeah, no, I, I
Did I lose you?
Nope, no, I, I haven't had a chance to really to, to, to delve into that. But obviously you've talked before that we still have a shortfall. I think we also need to look at outfits like waste management and what they're charging for a for, they have, they have a small and a large where they have so many 13 gallon bags, you know, in their trash and a, a larger one. I, I think, I think at least for the short term, I think we should keep the pricing the same. I think we, we probably need to spend a little more time looking at what we want, wanna in, increase the price to. But I think even, even raising the price, I've done some stuff in the past. I think we can be very competitive with folks like waste management, but still be able to raise the price to, to close in on the shortfall of, of, you know, what we're collecting and what we're spending.
I think I, I concur with that. I think because there was, and I don't, I, I don't know if it's anecdotal, but there's some, I believe that there may be some trash from outside of the town of Bolton coming to our transfer station that we're paying for it that would be included in that 750 annual tons. So, you know, with, you know, the improvement and the visibility and what's going into the compactor. You know, I think we'll be able to, to get a better handle and get, get some more history on it. I think it is prudent.
Yep. I think what, what I, what I'd like to do is I'd like to set a timeline for when, uh, cause, cause right now people have, people have stickers, people who don't have any stickers are buying bags. So we have sort of this middle ground where both are being used. But I would like to see us do a hard cutoff on a particular date where after a certain date, there will be no more use of stickers. We will use bags and I would be in favor of allowing residents, if they want to convert their existing stickers to bags. We give them that, that timeframe to allow them to do that. So that they're, they're not, that they can remain whole. But I, I, I don't want to have an indefinite period where we allow the residents to exhaust their stickers. Cause it only compounds the issue for the guys at the transfer station in terms of, of compliance. I don't know how you feel about that, but I, I think we, we need to have a, by whatever date we decide, there'll be no more stickers and it's, it's, it's a hundred percent bags. And I think for the people who use a transfer station, we give them, we give them enough time when they're dumping their, their garbage that they can just swing by the transfer station and do a one for one swap.
Well, I you know, so long as we're not selling stickers, I don't think there's any number of people who have bought more than a year's worth or six months worth of stickers. So I, I can see the appeal to doing that, but I don't know that it's, it's gonna improve things that much by, by having a cutoff.
Well, what I'm
You're creating friction that you don't need to create.
Well, what I'm concerned about it is, is, is compliance and, and out of, out of town folks. There are, there are people in Bolton who are dumping their garbage, who aren't using anything. There are people who are coming from out of town who are dumping their garbage at the transfer station. And, and the whole purpose of this was to allow the, the folks at, at the, the DPW works at the transfer station to very, to quickly identify from a distance who's in compliance and not. I don't think it's that great a hardship. If we give, if we give people 60 days or 90 days to, to use up what they have. But, you know, come on in, dump your garbage, stop by and see Eddie or Scotty and do a swap. I don't think that's such a, such a hardship. Because if we don't, then when, when is the cutoff? When, when, when is it that, that, you know, we know for sure that people in town who are not buying anything are dumping this stuff and the out of towners who are dumping their stuff? When, when does it end? There's gotta be, there's gotta be some date when we know for sure that only colored bags are being used. What would you, what would you propose as an alternative? If we don't, if we don't provide some hard cutoff date, whether that be May or the beginning of the new fiscal year or something?
Well, I would, I, I guess, you know, the other thing I could say is, is as of, I don't know, say 90 days. You know, there's gotta be some tougher inspection of the bags if you're not using the colored ones, but I don't know if that's, that's feasible.
No, it's, it's not. I mean, we, we need to make, you know, the, the guys at the transfer station have had to put up with a lot. And I've been up there where they get into arguments with people who, who think they're above the law. And I, I have witnessed
I don't disagree with that. Yep, that happens.
Yeah. And it, it happens a lot. So I, I'm, I really would prefer to have some definitive date that says after this date, only bags.
I, I just don't know how you get the word out to everyone. And, and my, my concern is that they're gonna learn about this at the transfer station, which is just gonna create the friction you're trying to avoid. You, if you've got a solution to that, then I'm fine with this.
What, what do you mean friction?
Well, if, if, if people don't know about this cutoff date until the cutoff date comes and they've got stickers on their bags, then it's the guys who are working there who are gonna bear the brunt of the frustration.
Well, maybe we put up some big signage. And, and, you know.
I don't know. As, as the manager, Randy, how, how would you like to see this handled? Or how would you, what, what do you see as the pros and cons of either approach?
I, you know, we did have a few residents purchase a quantity of stickers when they heard the bags were coming through. Got approved. My gut feeling is a majority of the stickers are gonna run out within two to three months. After that, there'll be, you know, trailers. If, you know, I hate to kick anything down the can, kick the can down, down the road or anything, but you know, maybe, you know, July 1st was mentioned. I mean, we can utilize the, um, the mobile solar sign that we put up where taxes due and things like that. We could, you know, put a sign at the transfer station. Swap your stickers for bags, you know, or something like that.
Or, or bags only as of July 1 or something.
July, well, you're, you can do that. And we can put out a number of news, you know, bulletins off the website, things of that nature. But, you know, I, what was, I I mean, if you, if you want to go with that for now, and then we can meet again, perhaps before that implementation day and we'll have a better idea how many that we think that there really are out there that are like that.
I'm glad you said that, Randy, because I, you know, when we were talking in terms of 90 days, anyway, that gets us approaching the end of May. So starting with the new fiscal year, July 1st, that's only another 30 days. And I think it would certainly dwindle down the vast majority of supply out there. And it would, I think significantly reduce any potential friction that the folks at the transfer station may get. You know, because I, I don't think, I think we have a much smaller number of instances coming up. So I know it might not be as quite, quite as quick as you might like, but it, it might seem to be the, the easiest all the way around.
No, that's fine. I mean, I, I originally would want it May, 1st of May, but I, I'll go with, I, I think 1st of July, new fiscal year.
Okay.
Just a little bit more time. And, and we just, we publicize it, we'll get the, the electronic sign. And, you know, we just do a little bit of education. Yep.
All right. Sounds good.
And do, can I make one comment?
Sure.
So at town hall, we give out the senior allotments of 100 dollars worth of stickers. Typically that lasts a senior 40 weeks. And we were giving out stickers up until January 31st. So there, I, I don't agree with you that a few months is gonna be enough time to deplete the majority of the stickers out there. I personally think it would take 40 weeks to, to fully deplete people's allotments.
How, how many people do you think got their seniors allotment since January 1st? Just roughly.
You mean since July 1st?
No, since January 1st.
Oh, since January 1st? Well, we started giving out bags in February 1st. So gosh, I don't know how many got them in January. I could calculate it and give it to you, but I'm concerned that all of the stickers that we've given out since July 1st have essentially been nearly a year's worth of stickers for seniors. I mean, not quite a year's worth, but nearly a year's worth.
Then, then they can, then they can get those stickers swapped for bags.
Yeah. And, and, and if they got it in July or August, they'll use them up by July 1st.
By July 1st of?
Of this year.
This year.
Well, they didn't get them in July 1st though. People get them on a rolling basis.
Then they can come in and they can get their
Okay. But I guess the point I was trying to make before is since January 1st, there's maybe a dozen people that
I, I bet it's more than that. Cause January, there's a misconception of a lot of people that don't understand fiscal versus calendar year. So usually in January, we got a lot of people that come in thinking that the program
Okay.
has just renewed.
All right. Do, do we record who, who we've given those stickers to?
Yep.
All right, then, then we can figure out some way to get the stick, to get the bags to them.
Or at least notify them in particular.
And it can't be that many people. We'll figure out a way, we'll figure out a way to bring them right to their houses.
Why don't, why don't we do a little research and, and report back at the next meeting of what the approximate number might be?
Yeah.
They can get a sense for that.
I could do that.
I'll be happy to go to every person's house and do it.
Oh, I can't wait, Stan.
It's like Santa Claus. That's right.
Don't come down the chimney, Stan, please.
No, no, not the chimney. No, I won't do that. No, no.
Okay.
So are we done for that?
Yeah, yeah. I, I guess what you're, you're gonna defer the discussion, I mean, defer the date to the next meeting and waive, uh, whatever information that we're able to pull together.
No, I, no, I think, I think we should, we should set July 1st.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm happy with July 1st. And now we gotta decide how, how do we achieve that?
How do we achieve that? And what, if there are any, any roadblocks, how do we overcome that?
Yeah.
Well, if you set on July 1st, you should probably have a vote. And then at the next, and, and then at the next meeting, I guess you'll discuss what the roadblocks are and, and how you overcome them.
Okay. So I move to, what's, I, I moved that it be bad, that stickers no longer be used and it be bags only. Bolton bags only as of July 1st, 2023 at the transfer station.
I will second that. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Roll call Sakansky.
Aye.
Way Saki.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Randy.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Randy.
Thank you, Randy. Okay. So we've gone through your report. So next up is select board business. And I think we started that. You don't have any public announcements. Okay. Same for, for me, except with bottles and cans at the transfer station. I'm seeing deposit bottles and glass. So please separate your stuff out. Next up, future agenda item discussion. Bob?
Nothing. No, nothing tonight. Um, nothing, no, nothing tonight.
Um, I do, I think uh we might wanna have a discussion at some point in the near future with our representatives from the uh RAAAC Subcommittee.
Okay.
Um, uh, Brian Boyle and Lorraine Remosco. Uh, we have gotten uh what appears to be some quasi-final draft of the regional agreement. Um, and I've had some, some discussions with both of those individuals. Uh, and there may be some items in that agreement that we might wanna discuss further. Um, and uh we might wanna discuss that before either before the school committee votes or the uh DESI votes on that, so I think that will be something that we want, may wanna do sooner than later, so that's
Yeah, we're gonna put down the next, put it on the next agenda, okay, that sounds good.
Okay. That's all I got for now, um, all right, next up is to call the caucus for Monday, March sixth, twenty twenty-three, at seven PM at the Bolton Public Library, seven thirty-eight Main Street.
So moved.
I'll second that, all those, all those in favor signify by saying aye, aye.
Roll call, Sikansky?
Aye.
Weissaki?
Aye.
Thank you, and I'll have those ready for you in your folder to be signed.
Great, thank you. Next up, uh, a a brief discussion of the residence options for comparing and or switching electricity providers. I guess uh I asked for this and this is just sort of born out of the fact that we had in the past uh a electricity aggregation Subcommittee that was formed quite some time ago to look at finding uh an alternative for uh electric power supply in the town of Bolton. And uh apparently that's stuck at the state level. Um, and I know that there's been a lot of chatter on Facebook and Nextdoor Bolton about people seeing their electric bills and the rather high increases in their uh electric services. Um, Donna, I don't know, I don't know exactly how how you wanna go ahead with this, I mean this is something that we're not necessarily endorsing one vendor over another, but um that there are potential options that people can look at uh if they want to look to switch independent of this aggregation Subcommittee and if it ever gets past the state. And I also wanna note, it has nothing to do with the Subcommittee, it's all at state level and it's being held up by the state.
Yeah, the community aggregation plan has been languishing at DPU for over two years. Uh, we're one of thirty-one towns that have been held up, there was a major ar- uh article in the Globe about it. Um, we we would need to determine where on the website um would be an appropriate spot to put this type of information, you you had sent me some links as examples as to what we could do. Um, and we could make peo- we could make people aware that the links are there, the 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 two things that I I would wanna stress is, one, as you said, we're not recommending one provider over another, it's si- simply raising the level of awareness and B, uh, our staff is not positioned to help people in any way fill out the uh the uh, um fill out the applications or anything like that. Uh, so, um, it's there strictly as informational, uh, but uh we 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 have no staff support to assist people.
Right, right, this is, we're not endorsing anything, we're just providing some information to allow people to make their 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 own own decisions. Uh, I I for one have have done that, so it's actually a fairly straightforward process, but uh I think uh we'll find a place to put it on the website, uh, and we'll try to publicize that to give people a variety of links to allow them to to uh uh, there's a, there's a, there's a state-sponsored website and and the like. Um, so they they can take a look and they can make their own stuff, but we should make sure that there's plenty of disclosures that we're not endorsing in any of this, we're just giving people the information to allow them to uh um, find that, so Bob, any questions or comments?
No, no, I think it's a good idea, um, more information's better.
All right, we'll, we'll, we'll give you an update at the next meeting.
Okay, so you don't need any vote for us, just you just
No, I I don't believe so.
Okay, uh, and can I ask who who Kelsey Griggs was, who uh uh made some comment? I have no idea who Kelsey Griggs is, but uh there was some, but anyway, uh, we'll, we'll move forward. Um, next up is the acceptance of a twenty-five-hundred-dollar gift to the Conservation Commission for Land Maintenance at Bauer Springs. Any questions or just wanna move to uh approve?
No, I'm, I'm uh, I I read the write-up that was provided, I'm comfortable with it.
Okay.
Um, so I move to accept the gift of twenty-five-hundred dollars from the uh Bolton Conservation Trust um for maintenance uh purposes at Bauer Springs.
I will second that, all those in favor signify by saying aye, aye.
Aye.
Roll call, Sikansky?
Aye.
Weissaki?
Aye.
And Stan, I believe that Kelsey Griggs um writes for the Bolton and Stowe Independent, if I'm correct.
Okay.
I, yeah, I just wanted to chime in here, I did not send that, um. That is, that is not me typing that right now.
So, why don't we just move on and and uh ignore this for the moment? Okay, Kelsey?
Yes, thank you.
You're very welcome, okay, next up is the review of the annual report of the select board.
Uh, Mr. Weissaki, I have reviewed in exhaustive detail, the annual report of the select board, and I find it wholly satisfactory. So I would move to accept the uh um annual report as presented.
Well, it it sounds like like a granola commercial where you're just like, like, it's just so wholesome and wonderful and you love every bite of it.
Oh, believe me, I I looked through this thing for something to to chip at and complain about, but I there just wasn't anything there.
Well, then I've done my job.
That's right. It must be, was it you or was it one of those uh chat GPT things that
Oh, no, uh, chat GPT, that was it.
There we go.
I just studied a bunch of stuff and it out of pop. All right, well, then I'll take a motion to approve the annual report for the select.
Uh, so moved.
Uh, second that, all those in favor saying aye.
Roll call, Sikansky?
Aye.
Weissaki?
Aye.
Thank you.
Next up is to a bit, uh, to a, to approve, I'm I'm just so flustered with all the, I'm overwhelmed.
Don't, don't let it go to your head, Stan, it's not gonna last.
No, I know it's not gonna last, we're about, done, done in about two seconds. Uh, to approve the bills and the payroll warrants, W twenty-three dash sixteen and W twenty-three dash sixteen A.
So moved.
I'll second that, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Roll call, Sikansky?
Aye.
Weissaki?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is to approve any minutes, and I believe we have uh regular session, session minutes for January twelfth with some changes and January twenty-sixth with no changes. You wanna pop up the one for the twelfth?
Yes, hang on one sec.
Great, thanks.
I learned a new skill too, I guess I can delete chat messages, didn't know I could do that till just this moment.
Add it to your LinkedIn profile.
Yep, good.
Okay. All right.
Changes are in red.
Okay.
They're pretty minor.
Okay.
Yeah, looks fine.
Approve.
All right, so I move to approve the minutes of January twelfth, regular session, and what else was it?
Twenty-sixth.
And the uh, minutes from the uh January twenty-sixth meeting.
Great, I'll second that, all those in favor signify by saying aye, aye.
Aye.
Roll call, Sikansky?
Aye.
Weissaki?
Aye. Okay. So we are done with that, I thought there's no more select board business. Uh, next up is uh having an executive session pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter thirty-eight Section twenty-one A three to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Teamsters Union Local one-seventy. If an open meeting may have a detriment, no effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the Board of Selectmen, and the Chair so declares. And do we have any executive session minutes to approve? We do?
We do.
We do, we and we do. And the board will return to open session for the purposes of adjournment only, do I have a motion to approve?
I move, we enter executive session.
I will second that, all those in favor signify by saying aye, aye.
Aye.
Roll call, Sikansky?
Aye.
Weissaki?
Aye.
Thank you.
For everyone in the playing the at-home.